Thank you, City Commission. We are, Richard's gonna have the prayers. Carol will have the prayers. Richard?
Well, we just said, Lord, please be with us tonight and guide us, Lord. You know, in years, in our wisdom, give us the wisdom that we have need to follow your hope and leadership for this community, Lord, and to help everyone in this community to have a wonderful community, wonderful nation. We just ask you to be with us tonight especially and help us. We ask this of the name of your son, Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one and safe under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. I asked you to dial your cell phone if you haven't done that already. Public comment, I don't think we have any up here while the folder will be opened shortly for your comments on one of the items on here. We will get to that in just a minute. Approval of the May twentieth minutes, you have a copy of those in front of you.
You would approve the minutes?
Two thousand twenty-four.
Got a motion from Richard?
I'll second.
Second from James, approved the May twentieth minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close sign. Thank you. Motion passes. Uh, financial report, you have a copy of the sales tax in front of you and again, doing very well.
Yeah, I gave Leslie the, I guess she saved the night off. The auditors are in the building tomorrow, so she's still up in her office gathering paperwork for her in the morning.
Okay, the best April we've ever had last month, so that's, that's good news.
Yeah.
Good numbers. Any questions about financial report or their information? Item number six is the Board of City Commission made discussion to take action on the following agenda items. Item number one, discussion and consideration of approving resolution two thousand twenty-four dash ten, setting a public hearing to determine whether a structure on a property commonly known as two oh seven West Patterson is a dangerous building pursuant to chapter five, article four of the Code of Ordinances.
Yes, sir, ma'am. All that, all we're doing tonight is we are setting a public hearing for next month to start the process of condemnation on this property of two oh seven West Patterson. Tom, you want to take over?
Uh, yes. The, you'll find out there in front of you, I printed out some standards of how we determine what by our code is a dangerous building. I highlighted under number one, the five issues that this building meets for us to refer to it as a dangerous building. Also, number two, as it's not secured. Section five dash seven six talks about inspection and notice of abatement, which is the steps that Terry's taken so far to try to get compliance for anybody that might be tied to this building. And I'll let him go into who he spoke it to and the comments for that. In section five dash seven seven are the enforcement powers that you, the Board of Commissioners. So this gives you the different powers that you have, different things that you can deem for this building. There's, you can give it an order to repair if there was somebody that would answer to that. You have the ability to condemn it. And then there are some other options there that you can read over and familiarize yourself with in between now and if you decide, you know, go ahead and give us the date for the hearing for next month. Terry, if you would, go ahead and explain them, like, who, you know, show them some examples.
Yeah, I was gonna show you the, the structure. This is what it looked like back in May of two thousand nineteen. Metal roof, windows, doors. As you can see, we actually even had tagged it back then, being an issue. This is what it looks like today. They have taken the metal roof off, taken all the windows and doors out.
And when we say they, it's not anybody that owns the property or has custody and control of the property. This is somebody that is, lives nearby that has decided to...
They, they were given permission by nephew who has no claim to the property. He lives in Washington State. He doesn't want anything to do with it. He has no, no legal claim to it. There are no heirs. The property owner is deceased.
Who's the nephew, a nephew of? I don't think their name. Who, who are they a nephew of? The people that took it?
No, the property owner, the deceased property owner.
The person that had, that owned the property, the gentleman that passed away, is his brother's son.
Son, yes.
And this guy is a professor up in Washington. The only way we were able to find him was because he had paid the taxes one year and had his mailing address put in there as, as a person who had claim to it. But after visiting with him, he has no legal claim to the property. He doesn't want anything to do with the property. I spoke with him on the phone about a year and a half ago when we first started sending him letters to try to find out what was gonna happen with his property. And he, he explained to us that he has no power over this property. He actually doesn't want anything to do with it. And I told him, well, if that's the case, you know, we, we have to send you letters because you're one of the people that we have as, as matters of contact through the CAD. So if you don't want to have anything to do with us, then you can disregard the letters and let them return. And that's what he has now.
Okay. What about the vehicles? There are two vehicles that that has.
That's the, the, the party who has stripped the home, who live around the corner, they use that carport to park.
Vehicle. Do both cars belong to the same people?
Yes.
And we, I think we stickered one or left note, a note on one that they, you know, they need to remove their vehicle if they own the property out there because we were going, we have put notification on the property multiple times that we were in this process of coming to y'all for condemnation.
The property owner died April twenty-first, twenty nineteen.
Okay.
No, no, a single man, no heirs, no children.
So we need to set a hearing?
Yes, sir. And at that hearing, we'll bring more detailed evidence of where it meets the, the dangerous buildings.
I mean, and just for record, everybody that's listening and watching, the city's not in the condemnation business. We're not looking to take people's property from them, but sometimes this is the easiest path for...
And, and we're getting complaints from neighbors.
Yeah.
That, that's what started this, is we, neighboring properties were complaining about the state of the property and about the overgrowth and how it's falling in.
It seemed bad shape. I drove by there to look at it and it seemed pretty bad and dangerous.
Yes, sir. And, and just to state, you know, when we have a property that's like this, that, that we have somebody local that may still own it, we would much rather work with them before it gets to the state and try to find a way. And that's why some of your powers, if we brought a, a dangerous building to them, you can give an order to repair, which is a, an order that's filed and filed with the county, that you give them X amount of days to, to come up with a plan and attempt to, you know, secure the property and bring it to a state where it's not a danger to the community. And we don't have that ability with this property.
Once we do this and declare dangerous and we go through the process, we end up with the property and it's sold at an auction or something?
No, sir.
No, we'll end up, we'll put a lien against the property and then at some point we can foreclose on that lien.
We have the, we have a, in the budget now, we have a section that is for demolition, to where we can put it out for bid and have somebody come in and have a professional...
That's where I was headed.
Raise the property to where it is cleaned off and then it is still with the taxing entities on the rolls until the taxes are paid and it is put up for sale.
So the, the short answer is, yes, we will end up with it, but it's still a long process before we end up with it.
Well, we need to go through the next thing instead.
Yes, there, there are increments to all this stuff. We, we will obtain the property.
We do that next week. Want to have our meeting?
We, no, because we have to have a certain time period to advertise it and everything. So that's why we just said do it next month, that plenty of time for the notices to go out and all that.
Okay. We need approval of resolution two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-four dash ten, set a public hearing to determine whether this structure or property should be condemned.
I assume.
Motion from Richard?
Second motion.
Second from Carol, approved resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one zero. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close sign. Motion carried. Item number six. Nope, 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 nope. I have too many pieces of paper. Where's my other piece of paper? Where's the actual agenda item? Send me one.
Oh, you took your servant.
I threw it away. Okay. Discussion regarding two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget items, contract for the Eastern County Dispatch and with a cooperative ambulance service contract. Uh, this is something that I have put on here and I've told some of you that I've talked to. I have not talked to the Commissioners about this, but they may have as many or more questions than what the audience might have. My heartburn, my reason for bringing this before the Commission, bringing up the discussion, has nothing to do with the hospital or with the county. It is Eastland's, uh, my constituents, also some of your constituents, uh, well, they are your constituents. Uh, we pay double, triple, quadruple for some of these things. Uh, we pay county taxes, we pay city taxes, we pay hospital taxes. Uh, all those fitting together. And my question is, I can probably guess all day long about how we got here, but it's time that we look at this, we have a discussion about it and find out if there's a better way to do it. And that's the reason why it's here. I know we've got hospitals. I don't see anybody from the county here, but that's why we've got the hospital folks well represented. If you would like to speak to that or ask any questions, go ahead. Commissioners, if you have any questions, this is the first time you're really hearing about this. Uh, we, I think it's time we address this and we have a, a discussion about it. And as you'll notice, it's not anything we're voting on tonight, not anything we're doing tonight. I'm trying to get this on our, in our budget process as we're all getting close to starting for next year's budget. We need to have, have this discussion. So if you may have any comments, questions, thoughts?
I do. Nancy Stewart, I'm president of the hospital board. And, and Larry did let, let us know our weight that he was going to discuss, so that's why some of those are here. Um, Kell Jordan, who's the last president. Um, Joe Ratz is CEO of the hospital. And Mr. Hughes is one of our board members.
Sergeant on.
Is that what he is?
Standing by the door.
Get the big guy in the room.
I would not want to confront him, that's for sure, being standing by the door. But this is just, you know, and, and I re-looked at the hospital enabling legislation again today. It's real easy to find. You just put in Eastmore Hospital Enabling Legislation in your search engine and it'll pull it right up. It's on the state website. And, um, we've actually looked it over several times because we had it readjusted this last year to match current, um, election codes and stuff like that. But the hospital is not tasked with providing an EMS system. That's not one of the things a hospital's tasked with doing. And the co-op agreement has, um, the hospital paying some, the city of Eastland paying some, the city of Cisco paying some, and the county paying considerably more. And I believe Ranger opted out and they provided their own ambulance service. And Kell can actually give us some information on how that was formed. And Mr. Hughes told me that when he was young, the ambulance service was provided by the funeral home and stuff. So it's not really anything tasked with the hospital. So I would disagree with you on double paying on it. I mean, it's, I mean, you're paying for the city of Eastland, Cisco's paying for the city of Cisco, and the county's paying the countywide. And the hospital, really, we pick up just about anything else that's left. So I don't, I don't agree with that position on it. But as it is, it's a cooperative agreement. If anybody falls out of it, the whole agreement goes away. And so the funding of the EMS system goes away. And, yeah, and it does get some income, but, but you get the financial statements and you look at those. And I think it lost seventy-nine thousand last month, which is...
Last month?
Last month. Which is more than usual. It usually only loses about thirty or forty thousand a month, but it lost quite a bit last. The month before, we actually had income of thirty thousand and we kind of knew that we were probably the next month, something that, that payments all hit at once or something. So we had, so it's not like it's a profit center for the hospital to begin with. Kell, would you give some of that?
Well, if you don't mind, if I could just sit and, and, well, and it's like, uh, the mayor said too, and you guys have been around here long enough to remember, but at one time, every town, major town in this county had a hospital. Then they started going bankrupt and, and we had Gorman, Cisco, Ranger, I believe. And then they each ran their own ambulances. Well, then when that went up, then we tried to figure out how to take care of it. I can remember as a young man that, that we did the private, we had the privates come in. And I, and I don't remember if that apparently didn't work too well, service wasn't good, whatever. So, you know, and that's just where it, it's kind of like the ER, the dialysis, you know, I don't know how much moral or ethical or legal that we have to do that. It's kind of one of those necessary services. And my, and, and here's the deal, and I know all of you guys, you know, I know that we haven't done anything with that as far as increasing in about ten years, maybe wrong.
That's true. We did it last year.
To move it up, okay.
We had that one said last year.
Well, well, that's what I'm saying. Trying to keep it down, the same way with the half cent sales tax. And y'all all know, we've all talked about that. That would probably run the hospital. And I'm just throwing numbers, but it's about eight to nine days. So, you know, that half cent sales tax, because I understand, I'm, where the mayor comes from, it seems like we kind of have to carry, because there are, Gorman doesn't pay anything, Rising Star doesn't pay anything, but everybody gets services. I understand.
The county covers there.
That's right. And I'm just saying though, as, as I see where you could, you know, I, I, I see where you're kind of coming from, but, uh, it's, it's kind of one of those services. If we don't, I, I mean, it, it will be a matter of time. And, and here's the deal, I think probably, uh, the, back in the day, each, uh, city had their own hospital district. And that's why ours is so small, basically about the size of the school district. And, you know, maybe someday if we go to and we've got the legislation in there, enabling the legislation, to maybe make it a countywide and everybody, because these people are gonna have to vote themselves a tax and they're not gonna want to do that because they're getting, like you said, for free. So I don't, you know, what you're concerned about is Eastland and I appreciate that and I understand that. Uh, but as far as the others, uh, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna have to do something. It's kind of like you said, I don't, we need to talk about it. And it, it's a, you know, uh, yeah. Uh, so, and I can, does anybody got any questions? Am I saying that wrong? I don't, I'm...
Well, let me, let me back up just a second to what Nancy said, is we're not paying double. Uh, my comment, you don't think we're paying double? You gonna stick with that?
I will. If we didn't pay double, I'd be paying it for thirty years.
Okay, yes, you have. Yes, you have. The city beats you. You most certainly have. That's a good point. Glad you brought that up. You moved outside the city, right?
I did. So am I not paying double?
You're not, no ma'am, you're not paying the city part of it.
Well, I'm kind of still, you know.
That's my, that's Nancy, that's my point. My, my point is very simple. The taxpayers, my constituents, our constituents, you two sitting on the board, Joe, I don't know where you live.
I live in a hotel.
You live where? In a hotel? Well, you pay part a little bit through their, through their tax. But we pay for the county, we pay for the hospital, we pay for the city. Kell, you brought up the half, brought up the half percent sales tax. That's in there too. Now, all of us pay that, okay? But that's a gift from the city that was done several years ago. I remember when the hospital district was formed, my rec, I moved here in nineteen eighty-three, forty years ago. And when, I don't know the dates, but my recollection is when Eastland became a taxing district, Cisco and Ranger shut the doors. That was kind of like, okay, they've lost the battle. They're it over. Because they were already a taxing district and were struggling big time. That's what I remember. And I'm more than grateful and thankful we've got the hospital here. That's not, that's not the issue. We're, we're very blessed. But citizens in Eastland are paying double for dispatch and for the hospital, because we pay a county tax, we pay a city tax. All I'm saying is I want to, to go back, I want to revisit that and see if that can't be adjusted, fixed, or something so that we make this more equitable across the board for the entire county. Because that ambulance serves the entire county. The ambulance we have serves the entire county. And, and they do that. Uh, this is, and I've, I've been told that this is a, a deal we're trying to get away from the county. Uh, we just agreed with the sheriff to do HMHR, uh, MHMR, Health and Human Service. Mental Service, get it right. Uh, but we just, I mean, that, because we're getting a service, they're helping our police department. We're part of that. We understand that. That all works. We get service for the ambulance. For my service, the ambulance is paid for by the county. I'm already paying for it. And I'm paying twice. That's, that's, that's the discussion that I think we need to have on this and the dispatch. I've talked to the judge. I expected him maybe to be here. We may be having a face-to-face with him again. He may say, I don't need to come to this deal. He already knows what it is and they're gonna have to talk about it. Uh, there, he may bring it to his commission and find out. But this is a, an open door that I think it's time we have that discussion. Uh, we more than appreciate, the city does not want the ambulance business. Uh, that's been brought up. We want to know, we don't want to be in the ambulance business. Y'all, that is y'all's deal. And I just say, as we do this, the county sets that umbrella for the entire county, because that's what they serve. It's not just about serving the citizens of Eastland or the citizens of Gorman or Cross Plains or Rising Star. It's all one big deal. It's all right here, under the umbrella of the county. And that's, that's my message and that's why I'm bringing this to the table, why I brought it up tonight. And, and as I've said, I don't know what this Commission wants to do, what their thoughts are, if, if they've got any opinion about this, but that's what it's about. And that's what it's, it's somehow we ended up paying double. And I know how, because we were gonna lose the ambulance service. It, it's really funny, Don, you brought, I think I remember the ambulance service being at the, the funeral home. That's kind of a scary thought. It's kind of like, you know, let's, let's do something. You know, I'd like to at least have a chance here. You know, this guy, you're talking about dipping out of both pockets, man. Well, we didn't make it, sorry, it's going to the funeral home. But that, that's what this discussion is about.
Dale Baker?
Huh?
Dale, Jack, Jack Harrington was approved, yeah.
Yeah, that was, that's when I moved here. I think that's where it was.
Yeah.
But that's what this discussion is about. Commissioner, do you have any thoughts or questions or anything come to your mind? You've heard this discussion?
I just, I think you're probably very right, you know, for double, double paying. And you know, we have to watch what we're doing here. The ambulance service is very extensive. Uh, I've, I've written both kinds, air and, and they're all very expensive. But we, my company pays for it, Medicare and everybody pays for it. You know, I don't know.
I understand the part for the hospital, they talk about the, the expense of the ambulance. Y'all, the insurance kills you when they get through with you. Y'all don't get to your insurance, what you're supposed to get out of that stuff anyway.
Yeah.
That's a, a hospital get what they actually should get from the insurance and the billing. Y'all'd be in great shape.
Well, it's a lot like the ER.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of people go there because they don't have insurance.
Yeah, they do, yeah.
You know.
You provide a service and, and it'd be nice to get that help. And you can just get what you're due from the insurance companies you have at bay. But they're gonna tell you how much that ride ambulance, ambulance should cost, right?
Well, I think a lot of people get confused too. We have nothing to do, and, and I always wonder about that with the, they think, oh, the hospital's getting rich with the helicopter. You know, we have nothing to do. That is another service that if you need to get out of here and get to a cardiologist, that's what it's for. But we don't, we don't get a penny or dime for that. And it's eighty, eighty thousand dollars from here to Abilene, probably a hundred and forty, no, a hundred and twenty thousand for worth. I see those bills. And they don't negotiate. And if you don't have insurance, you're not gonna let long enough to pay your hospital bill, you know. Yeah, just the air bill.
Paying the air flat.
You know, it's not, you know, that's not a, I don't know if people think the hospital, you know, we, we, we're doing good. And we can run that thing for a few years. Probably, you know, if everything stopped, I mean, we've probably got four or five years worth. And, and a lot of rural hospitals can't say that.
Yogi's turn, why?
Well, I mean...
On the days that of cash and things, we have time to run it, yes. As long as everything stays the same. If there's the slightest change, that number could drop drastically in a period of a couple of months.
Well, we want to open the door for the discussion. And when the contracts come out, if we have an agenda discussion, we'll need to have it. We need to figure out where we're going. And we, we probably need to get the county brought into this discussion. So however that takes place, if we start sending out these contracts, we need to have a plan going forward.
If you wish, uh, we could get a co-op meeting together. Uh, that is the, the county, the city of Eastland and the hospital, and the city of Cisco. Uh, those are the players in, in the way it is today, if you wanted to talk that way, if you want to involve somebody else.
How do you, how do you get Gorman?
I don't know who else is involved. I think that's the, again, that's the player to the co-op today. And I, and I say the county is a major player in this whole thing and how we address this. Bringing Gorman to the table, while that's a good idea, you're just gonna do to them what you're already doing to us. You know, you're gonna bring them and have them start paying for double too. That's not the answer to this question. That, yeah. I think before you mentioned of the co-op, the ones that need to be brought to the table, start having a discussion. That will move forward.
Should you desire, we can call the co-op meeting.
I think we need to do that. Sooner or better than later, because I know y'all's budget process starts here, what, July or August?
No, ours is, is now.
Well, our fiscal year is different from everybody else's. Oh, yeah, year and a, yeah, year and a.
June thirtieth, July first is our fiscal year.
Right.
And we had a co-op meeting, was it just last month? I think JJ was at that one. Just last month, we had a co-op meeting.
It was the good month.
That was the good month. And we told you that it probably wasn't.
I do remember saying that. That was the good month. That's, that's why they do, is they have a bunch of the co-op, they have a good month. Wow.
Yeah, we won't have one for several years.
That's a plan. How did you make money in that month? What was the difference?
I'm gonna assume, because you know, we have a, a billing service that bills, because it's totally different from hospital and everything else. We have a billing service that bills and collects. And maybe they just made more collections.
All the collections came in at the right time?
Has to be that.
Utilization, who has insurance, who doesn't.
Well, and also, I think we hired like several more paramedics. And paramedics are the expensive ones. And so they have to train some with existing. And so you're paying two salaries for a while to cover one position. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
And that training process, you know, in any business. And I think all that snowballed on us last month. I mean, at least from what I looked at. And I actually asked questions in our, our CFO, Cindy Pope, they talked with our EMS director, which is...
Heather Loftus.
Heather Loftus. We have two Heathers and I get the last names wrong. Heather Loftus. And, and those were the, the things that she presented as the reason. Uh, I, I do want to add this tidbit in about, um, the half percent sales tax. And I don't know if the city gets sales tax and it works this way or not, but for the hospital, that half percent sales tax, when Randy Clark figures up our effective tax rate, that, whatever sales tax we get the year before is backed out of that. Does that make sense? So the district pays that much less in taxes as a total. I don't exactly understand how it works, but...
What we collect in, in sales tax, we decrease and add the law on tax. We don't have to. And we probably shouldn't, we probably shouldn't have all these years. You know, that's what I'm saying. You, you get yourselves in these corners because it's, it's not necessarily right. Yeah, for the Eastland, you know, now, in, in the way I look at it, my, my hospital tax, and I don't know the numbers, but let's just say a hundred dollars, and my school tax is seventeen hundred. So I don't really worry about that. And I realize we gotta have it. But I understand too, you're coming from an Eastland point of view. You, you couldn't care less about Gorman and Rising Star.
No, I care about all of them.
Well, you know what I mean. Financially, they, they should step up to the plate. I don't know how you make them do that. It's not your job to, I mean, you're looking out for the dollars here.
The, our life would be simple if, if the people in the county didn't pay city taxes and the people in the city didn't pay county taxes. We all carry our own load. And then when you go to this thing, you have the discussion, everybody do their thing, and we'd all be happy. But it doesn't work that way.
Yeah.
And we're underneath the umbrella of, we've got the county here, the hospital here, and the city down here. We've got that umbrella for all three of them.
And they'd probably have been successful.
I want to hear that again. The sales tax, six hundred thousand dollars you get from the city, they back that out of your ad valorem?
Out of the effective rate every year. It's backed out, yes.
So our district people don't have to pay it?
Technically. I don't under, I didn't set it up. I don't understand it. And so Randy Clark is the one who figures it up and gives it to us. I don't know how.
That's just a way to let people from Cisco, Ranger, Gorman, when they go shopping at Walmart, that's their way of contributing to the hospital. That's just a way to let people from Cisco, Ranger, Gorman, when they go shopping at Walmart, that's their way of contributing to the hospital. If they get sick over here, they're gonna come to the hospital. So whatever, and it's not just Walmart, but it's whatever we collect in sales tax, we take that away in adult form tax. It's, there's no law, there's no rule and you can get yourself in a bind. Apparently before I got on there, and I'd say it's been thirty-three years, they made a promise to them. Because I think ours nearly went under one day, you know, one year. I don't know if it's in the eighties maybe or something and they saved it and they, once they got this half cent sales tax, I think the board members back then told them, whatever, whatever we collect from this, we're going to give back to the district, which is really small. So we've just always done that, but it, but sometimes you get yourself in a bind by not going ahead and increasing that. But somebody made that promise and we stick with it.
So.
But that's only why we run the hospital for how many days? Uh, eight days a year on taxes?
We're, we're at sixty?
Fifty-three thousand.
Sixty-three thousand a day to run, pardon, sixty what?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight. It can fluctuate, you know, depending on lots of different.
And that's been, yeah, because it was about thirty-five thousand, what, a year and a half, two years ago?
Probably five years.
Boy accelerated though.
Seems like it, yeah.
Well, I guess that's when I was budgeting finance. I remember earlier, but.
So if you lost that six hundred thousand dollars, you're not going to, I'm just asking a question. This is the first time I've heard this. If you lost that six hundred thousand dollars, you'd have to raise taxes X amount of dollars to make that up.
Technically raise them, but our, the effective rate for the next year would include that.
Yeah, right.
So, so technically it would be more, but it's not, that's how that works. And I don't understand.
No new revenue rate.
The no new revenue rate. That's right. They changed it, didn't they? Changed the name.
They changed it.
The no new revenue rate would increase six hundred.
Just when we understood effective tax rate, they changed it.
That's real good.
Even if your tax rate goes down, then you receive a penny more than it's a tax increase.
So this, this really is, is about county taxes and city taxes and we're doing it twice. That's really the, the question. And the judge has heard this. I was in his office and we talked about this already. He knows, he knows my concern, my thoughts and, and why we're bringing this to the table. Uh, I don't know the immediate solution. It's not gonna be something that we can do overnight. Uh, we can't crush the county budget in the process of all of this either. Uh, not that they would do anything. Don't know what they'll do, don't know what we'll do. But I, the discussion has been had and far done with, I'm, I'm good for right now. Uh, we need to get together with a co-op meeting and see what flies apart, uh, see if the wheels come off. You can set that up. Y'all wanna set that up?
I'll, I'll get it set up.
Okay. Anytime. Can't do it till the end of Wednesday, but after that, I'm good. Just a huge.
Vern, the one thing I'll say about this, I've been on the hospital for three years, two, two years and some days. Ambulance service has been the loss every time we turn around, you know. Every time you buy a new ambulance, you know, and, and a hospital cuts the money, sit back. But they just can't, can't keep going the way it's going in a negative process. I didn't know about the effective tax rate. But, you know, our tax rate right now for the hospital is thirteen, fourteen cents.
Ten point.
Ten.
Ten, ten, something like that. Anyway, that's a pent's concern and I'm not knocking schools.
No.
That's why I'm in my living. But, but, you know, you sit there and you think about that and you think about, okay, do you want an ambulance? Do you want an ER? Do you want dialysis center? And every time we send an ambulance to your, we've fitted or whatever, you're looking at a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars. So, and I understand what you're saying and, and Mr. Vern, one thing I will say, when they set up a hospital district, they didn't even take in the Eastland school district. In nineteen ninety, when they set that up, Eastland, the old part and school district went and entered Gorman. Right now, you go to Tukmo Highway and that's the end of the hospital district. So, you know, if, if they would have just gone on with their legislation and set it in the actual district, and we've talked about and, and folks, nobody's gonna vote themselves a tax. But doing a county-wide district would be the, the way to go.
Would be, yeah.
And you know, it's even frustrating just because it, it runs, uh, and Joe could tell you this, they may or may not utilize it. I guess it's their choice if sometimes, so you run this, you run a couple of paramedics out there and an ambulance?
Oh, yeah.
And they go, nah, I'm fine, you know, and it's all for nothing, you know, but what do you do?
Well, that would've been my question. Are, are y'all recouping any expense off of an evac flight?
No.
So strictly transport, no treatment?
Hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars is what it is, to have a belief.
So your paramedics arrive, minute their salaries and their supplies are utilized and there's no recoup?
On a, on a.
On an air evac flight?
Not on an air evac. We don't get any money from air evacs.
So many creative ways.
More charity.
That's, yeah, so. I came from a first responder organization and, and we had some creative, creative ways that the city provided subsidies. For example, the city subsidy could be relationship to the transport charge. So you, the transport charge could be cheaper for the cities of, the citizens of Eastland as compared to other citizens who, um, or that, those are options. Um, there were, uh, charges automatic that were applied to, um, uh, services provided. So, uh, well, the biggest one is dextrose. So, so you have a diabetic emergency, we administer D fifty, they wake up, they're perfectly fine, they don't wanna go. Well, that's an expensive charge to the service. So there was an applied service charge for those calls automatically that we, that, that the private, I mean, that the, uh, EMS service was able to recoup funding for those types of, there's just, I think, if, if, I'm not really behind the curtain on the EMS side. Uh, but just from the outside looking in, I, I think there's some creative ways that maybe we're missing the target.
You have to be really careful on creative billing. Um, they, they call that a violation of the law and there's really healthy penalties and fines. And they can go into the millions of dollars. Probably not our size of operation. I'll look and see, but right now my belief is that if we don't vote, we don't charge. We had a charge, we called it treatment, no transport.
Yep.
We just clicked a different box.
It was for supplies.
And the problem is you charge all day long. Nobody has any money.
Well, you know, and that's the emergency services. I think we can all agree that we're being taxed by the call volume, uh, and.
Forty percent.
It's, it's, it's very difficult, um, to keep up with the pace of the.
Forty percent.
And that's what we do each.
And they don't worry about it until they need, it's one of those of the.
And we do a lot of transports like, um, nursing homes through the hospital and back to the nursing homes. About frequently, those type things and they.
Never heard of.
But it taxes the emergency side?
So.
So there's three ambulants serving this entire county?
Yes, two are stationed in Eastland and one is stationed in Cisco. And Cisco provides the house, the housing for the ambulance and the housing for the, the, uh, the crew for the ambulance in Cisco. And they pay the same subsidy that Eastland pays. And Eastland doesn't pay for the housing or the, the, of the ambulances or the crew. And I'm pretty sure, think the subsidy is the same. And I wanna say, is it seventy-five thousand?
For who?
Um, it, do you have your?
Seventy.
Seventy?
Seventy, seventy thousand seven hundred thirty-seven dollars is what Cisco pays. We pay eighty-seven thousand seven hundred fifty dollars.
Their budget, uh, couldn't pass the, um, eighty-seven this past year.
And the county's one twenty?
One twenty. Yeah.
And we would, well, we would think. Two are stationed, are there two stationed in Eastland?
Well, yeah, yeah, because if, yeah, you got them over there, two over there, two over here. But you can't run one, you can't run one to Abilene, that leaves us one on call here. It keeps us, it keeps you hopping. If something goes bad and then Ranger is on its own. What are you thinking, Joe?
Oh, I just, I thought there was one medic in sta, uh, stationed in Cisco. One staff medic stationed in Eastland. And then the other staff medic was the mutual aid, uh, which is a BLS service out of Ranger. So when Medic Six goes to Abilene for that non-emergency transport, um, our citizens could receive the basic life support ambulance from Ranger on what we call a cover assignment.
Is that the way we do that? I thought we sent the basic life service on the non-emergencies.
If, if we know that, yes. Um, we were in danger of having to provide basic ALS, uh, BLS service for a period of weeks. We've hired enough paramedics now that we don't have to do that. Um, and so we can run ALS service on all three trucks when we need it. The biggest waste of time and money is the no-shows, the no-loads. Forty percent of our cases, um, we don't bring anybody back. For whatever reason.
Probably for one, they don't have any money and they're thinking they can't pay anybody. Cheerfully. And they're thinking, I'm not gonna get on there.
Well, it, it is their choice, Joe. We can't load them if they don't wanna load them.
Yeah.
Unless they can't speak for themselves.
Well, yeah, that's, that's a emergency condition.
Yeah. Good.
Uh, we'll set a, a co-op meeting, um, in the next couple of weeks.
Right.
And, um, see what happens.
Judge Holman was at the last meeting.
Later discussion. Thank y'all so much for being here. Appreciate your time and, and what you're doing. Appreciate it. Number seven, city manager's briefing.
Uh, I don't have much. Um, as you can see, the lights are blinking.
Yeah.
Out there.
Stop it.
Everybody stopping? Crashes are down, correct?
Yes, sir.
Don't know when they're gonna be fully operational and barrels are gonna be moved.
Lights down?
Crashes, accidents.
Oh.
Still have a few. They're down from where they were when they just.
Now you have a range, ladies, for people having to stop.
Yeah. Um, it's my understanding, techs out's waiting to get on the list with their people out of Fort Worth to come time everything. Make them sync up. I don't know. I'm out. I gotta turn it off.
They're up. That was your job.
I'm, I'm good.
That's my job, man.
We're finishing up, um, with EH and T pleading the water flumes that we drive on, uh, for the flood mitigation grant. Um, we're hoping that, that everything should be coming before y'all next month to approve the bids in that. Um, we've taken away, added a couple of things to it, but everything's progressing nicely. And.
The streets you're talking about?
Water flumes we drive on.
Water flumes you drive on?
Water flumes we drive on.
Commonly known as streets.
But, but the state will not pay for street. But if they're water flumes we drive on, they'll pay for them. Um, yeah, creative wording. That's really all I've got.
Any questions for JJ? Code compliance.
Questioners, uh, Terry started May with, um, twenty-six cases. He opened up forty-two new cases, closed fifteen. Left us with a total of fifty-three. ILOs total violations opened were fifty-nine, fifty-four total violations closed. Had a citation issued, uh, and with that citation, it was four hundred and sixty-two dollars. And the good thing is, is the property owner that had the citations took care of the problems with the building and has already paid the citations. So that'll be in the next month.
Great.
We like to go ahead and say that now because that happens so rarely. I had five annual notices and the citations were for dangerous building and for highways and grass. That was at the, uh, old radio station over here, one that had some breaks that were in a very precarious spot. Finally got those back where they aren't gonna fall, anybody walking around. They ended up securing the open window of the structure as well and cleaned up property. So that'll be announced up.
Any questions for code enforcement? Uh, Chief Pitts?
Yes, sir. Uh, police department responded to three hundred and forty-seven calls for service in May. Uh, we had fifteen arrests, forty-six reports were generated. We had twenty-six agency assists. We did three hundred and ninety-nine business checks. We worked ten traffic crashes, eleven domestic disturbances. We filed nineteen cases with the district attorney's office, zero on the juvenile again. That's good. Uh, traffic side of it, we wrote two hundred and fifty-three citations, three hundred and ninety-three warnings were issued for six hundred and forty-six traffic contacts. On the animal control side of things, uh, she issued four citations, two warnings. She answered a hundred and one, a hundred and twenty-one calls for service. We impounded eighteen animals. She adopted out four, zero quarantines in May. We had five narcotics arrests, five warrants arrests. Uh, these are just some of the bigger cases. We worked two sexual assault cases in May and three driving while intoxicated. So we had a pretty busy month, month in May.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions for Chief Pitts? Chief Williamson?
Thank you. Uh, for the month of May, we responded to seventy, seventy-two incidents. That gives us an average call volume of two point three calls a day. Fifty-four of those incidents occurred in the city limits, eighteen occurred in the county. We had zero mutual aid events this month. No smoke detectors were installed. We responded to eleven incidents after ten o'clock at night and before seven in the morning. No structure fires were attended throughout the county. Um, there were two grass fires. Uh, we responded to two motor vehicle fires. Uh, we made thirty-four calls to assist the ambulance service for, uh, first responder. Eight motor vehicle accidents, twelve public assists. Uh, we had eight false alarms and three, uh, investigations. No rescues. Uh, we almost had our animal rescue and it was, it, it resolved itself prior to our arrival. We had an animal, uh, trapped in a cattle guard, uh, but the landowner was able to free it right, right as our, uh, arrival. Uh, we've had three hazmat incidents or hazardous condition incidents, which were gas leaks. And we acquired two volunteers in the month of May.
Very good. How many structure fires have you had this month? I know you've had one.
We had one. We had a structure fire on Barket, uh, in Tuesday last month. Which, uh, I may sound like a fire chief, but, uh, I'm sure, I'm about to brag on the performance of the fire department and our members. So, pot arrival had heavy smoke showing. Uh, we had a volunteer that was, uh, also staffing out of, uh, at the station. So engine six was out of service, our ladder six was first on. So we staffed and the volunteer, that crew made an interior attack through the front door. Um, I arrived, got the, we got all the processes set up and about sixty seconds in, it vented through the roof. And we were able to get water application real quick, knocked it down and run it under control. Probably had about forty percent, uh, damage, sixty percent salvageable. Uh, been on a lot of fires in the big city, man, and we're doing it right here in Eastland, Texas, so. We had five fire parts on scene, thirty-one, thirty-one fire members, uh, on scene. I believe I counted, I think there were five paid salaries on scene, all the rest were volunteers.
Twenty-six volunteers.
Twenty-six volunteers.
Wow.
Fire chief from Ranger, Cisco, myself and staff and one other person, one of those volunteers.
Okay.
Very well done. Paul, also I wanted to add to, we're, the Eastland Fire Department's fixing to host our first E, EMT class. They have nineteen students throughout the county. Gorman, Rans, all, um, this is a no-profit class to the city or the fire department. And we're hosting at that cost just to start getting some certified people out there to help the EMS system in the rural areas and, and even in Eastland. I'm sure we're looking forward to that. It'll start July fifteenth.
Good deal. Good work. Thank you very much. Any questions for Chief Williamson? Municipal court? All there. All there. Next item.
I'm a weird adjourn. How's that?
Motion from Richard to adjourn.
I'll say.
Second from James. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Post sign. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here.